I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have all board members on the floor. Number one, two, approval of board meeting minutes for January tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Approval of board meeting minutes for January tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh... Approval of meeting.
There are no changes. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board appreciation proclamation by Mr. Hudson.
Um, January is school board appreciation month. And we do have a proclamation regarding the governor and a celebration. And that'll kind of take a big recognition before we begin the whole meeting. Um, so the proclamation is whereas the mission of Washington's public school system is to ensure that all students achieve at high levels, possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible members of the democratic society and enjoy productive and satisfying lives. And whereas Washington's one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven locally elected school boards, school boards of directors and nine elected educational service district E S D boards are core of the public education governance system in our state. Serve more than one point one million students and have a combined annual budget of over fifteen billion dollars and employ approximately one hundred and forty thousand people. And whereas school boards play a critical role in promoting student learning and achievement by creating a vision, establishing policies and budgets and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved. And whereas school board directors are directly accountable to residents in their districts and regions, serving as a vital link between members of the community and their schools. And whereas school boards and E S Ds provide a passionate voice of advocacy for public schools and the welfare of school children. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize school board directors as a standing public servant and champions for public education. Now, therefore, I, James, for the governor of the state of Washington, do hereby proclaim January two thousand twenty-four as school board right commission month. Being a school board director is a hard role. Uh, it's not a paid role and it's a volunteer role. So to have board members who listen to the voices of the community, set the vision of the district and serve communities really have a passion to have serve our students. Um, we want to thank you for serving us, our community. And we do have compliments of recognition for certain board members of the Washington State School Directors. We do have a brief break for curbs. Anybody who over has a curbs, so we want to precess this for all of you for what about one, ten minutes?
I need a recess for that one. Is there any second then? Later.
Aye. We will be recessing for five minutes so you can wrap up.
Thank you. Orders?
Oh, that's cool.
And we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Propose consent.
One second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion items. We have focus on kids' high school. We have presenter Ms. Tasha.
I'm going to kick off for Tasha. This is the good evening, love Tasha. Uh, this has been one of our big initiatives is for our board to see great examples. Our students are doing. Last two years, we had those buildings give presentations on like happening in the building. The ultimate goal is to see what our students are doing. So I want to thank us home for pulling this together, having three great examples of the incredible things happening here at Alma High School. And, uh, that for yours.
No, it was really easy to get Tim and Matt and Karina here and students. I've been so impressed having come to Alma to watch what all of you guys are doing in your classes and the chances that Tim and Matt Karina are taking with getting kids plugged into a curriculum and, and activities and building better communities for our kids. So I'm really excited for you guys to hear what they're going to share. We'll start with Karina Brown.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm the Spanish teacher and here and I have the privilege to be the advisor for the United People's Group Club. And in this case, I have to get some of the officers that would like to send to do some of the activities that we do.
Um, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jane Gaitas and I am the U P G president. We have our vice president, President Samantha Vinegas, our treasurer's Christian Martinez, secretary Diana Guzman, and historian Angela Arro. The United People's Group, U P G, mission is to unite people of different ethnicities, nationalities, languages, and cultures. We offer international and American students a place and time to come together to get to know each other's customs and traditions. In U P G club, we offer students opportunities to grow their leadership skills and develop their personalities. Some U P G activities. We've done a lot of U P G activities. Some of them are educational activities, community, community service, social events, and cultural events. First, we're going to talk about the educational events. For one of the educational events, we did La Chispa, which happened on December fourth. La Chispa helps students build their self-confidence, strengthen their culture identities, and increases their academic success. Identity, community, and leadership are the skills that develop in this program. Here are some pictures. We invited the middle school over to the high school and we high schoolers were the mentors and talked to the middle schoolers. Uh, here is us presenting ourselves. We shared our goals and, and we did many activities with them. Here is a picture of activities. We did, we played games. We connected with the middle schoolers and made them feel more comfortable. We also did this activity which we shared our high school experience to the middle schoolers and we tried to connect with them and like show, share our own experience of how us as middle schoolers transitioned to high schoolers and how it wasn't as bad as they think it is. And we, um, also let them ask us questions about how our high school experience was. And for community service, Christian.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christian Martinez and I'm going to be talking about the community service. So for this community service, we got together to clean the high school, middle school, and teachers parking lot. Um, after the cleaning, we'll have our traditional potluck. Uh, this year it will be on February twenty-fourth and it will be from ten o'clock a.m. through eleven o'clock a.m. And then we're going to have our potluck afterwards. So these are some photos from the previous years. And here's some other photos from the middle school when we cleaned up in there from before. And, uh, we're going to talk about the social events.
For, uh, some of our social events, every year we host a secret Santa where we all get together, enjoy time together, um, also plan about our next, um, activities that we will do. And we did a gift exchange this day. We also will host a movie night for our members and anyone that wants to join. We have, we get together and watch different movies and we also have our end of the year celebration. We get together, have a good time, and talk about everything that we did. For our culture events.
Okay, so for our culture events, we had two things. Um, was the, was the Latinx. Uh, we went to Centralia College on November seventeenth and they had different things that they could do uh, at the college and learn. And so some of the workshops that were for the students were, uh, learning how to play the college, uh, doing financial aid, careers in law enforcement, explore career in nursing, career counseling basics, navigating conflicts, having healthy relationships. In the technology area, there were diesel and welding workshops and technology, electronics, robotic, and automation. And then this was a picture taken, taken, um, before I think they went to the Latinx. And then for parents' night, uh, we had hosted a dance here at the Alma High School. Uh, we had professional asset dancers perform for the community and students who went there got extra credit points from experience class. And then the U P G club also participated by showing different, um, traditional dances from different states of, yeah, traditional dances. And then here's a picture of how many people came to the committee dance. And then some of the affiliate members came to model for some dresses from different, uh, Mexican states. And then thank you for your time.
You can stop making noise. Well, I loved the aspect it's in the other place. Yeah, there have been some sure amazing too, but it was so well attended. A, a great night that a lot of our group put into, so.
My favorite story from Ms. Brown is how U P G began. This is she opened you. If I get it wrong, tell me how you opened your classroom. The students wanted a safe place to come have lunch.
Yeah.
And it started in a conversation that the students wanted to help other students feel safe. They said, Jim, we started a club to help other students feel safe. And, uh, Ms. Brown is one of these, one of our teachers that I feel that every time I sit down with her and I hear Ms. Brown and her students talk, Mrs. Brown and her students talk, that I feel like I walk away with my cup full. So, uh, I just can't thank you enough for being a board and what you do for our students.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Remarkable about so many of our staff that these three teachers, kids love being in their classes. And it might be something like what you're about to see from Matt. That could be potentially very dry, um, and very difficult or frustrating. But just the love that all the great these, uh, teachers bring to their classrooms, the kids get that. And it just really shines. And so I really appreciate having you guys as colleagues.
Glad to be here. So I guess that's my cue?
It is.
Uh, that would be great. So, I think we should be able to give everybody some sort of. So, we're going low tech tonight. This is a packet, um, that I started this year. Um, with master-based learning, my goal is to make learning as fun as possible. This is an advocate of the Aussie class where we can get very acceptable with the vocabulary. And, um, my background going way, way back is teaching college. And like anybody who's been to college knows, a college professor loves to talk. And so I'm trying to do that in my classrooms. And so this is an example that I showed, um, Tasha the other day. So let's, I would put tables and if you share with your students. Just one thing, a table.
Here's something that I appreciate about Matt. He noticed that things were going, kids were kind of struggling in class, being engaged. He was like, what do I need to do to kind of turn it up a notch to get the kids back? So he dug into his art of high school TT tools. Kind of went old school with this kind of business and it kind of reignited kids again. And so I just, again, appreciate the reflectiveness and then being able to respond to how students are doing in class to provide opportunities like this.
Thank you. So I, I just want to kind of show everybody the lab. So if you have a lab, um, sheet in front of you, um, kind of walking through what the anatomy kiddos are looking at. So the purpose is to help students visualize the anatomy cross-section of bone. So the skeleton and parts of our body have been talked about in, um, science classes from late elementary through middle school when we're starting to put literally the pieces of the puzzle together and looking at, um, the body in a more in-depth, um, process. So the skeleton can be, um, confusing when we get to what is going on inside the bones. This is a really nice, uh, lab that I found. So the first, as we work our way down here, we help students visualize the need for canals and compact bone and use the bagel to identify some different parts of the cross-sections. So going through the notes, just talking about different characteristics of bones, mature cells, the functions of bones. It gives us our structure. Um, we start by, um, identifying many different parts of our skeleton that moves our high school kiddos, our athletes. The bones that they have thought about, maybe even injured, had x-rayed. And so really kind of drive home some of the things they already might be thinking about. But also talk about the importance of storing minerals like calcium. And why, uh, calcium is such a big deal. It's such a big deal. If you don't eat enough calcium in your diet, your body will eat itself. You'll eat its own skeleton and absorb that calcium. So we use that information when we talk later about the nervous system and how calcium is used to make the nerves do their job and send information to different parts of the body. And then the production of red blood cells. We learn a fancy word called hematopoiesis, which is the making of red blood cells inside our bone marrow. So the bone marrow is deep inside our bones, personally you're not even thinking about as a high school student. So take any deeper dive into what is going on in our skeleton. And then the protection of our internal organs. And as an athletic trainer, um, you know, I deal with orthopedics. So there's always, uh, a chance to go down a rabbit hole in story time, dislocations, fractures, all kinds of things going on with, um, the skeletal system. So if we turn the page, then we start looking at some pictures here. Classification of bone. So there's two types of classification of bone. We have cortical bone, also known as compact, um, dense bone. And we have some characteristics there and then we will turn the page. And now we look at the blood vessels. And I didn't hand it out tonight. I didn't have enough needles, um, from our cell kit at the house to bring. But what, the next level up for this is the tied dental floss to needles. And then we would thread it through parts of the bagel that we're going to work on here in a minute. And what does that floss, um, represent here on this page? Instead of a picture, now I'm creating a perversion canal for a blood vessel and nerve to go into. So now I take the picture that I have and now I put it in my hand and I'm manipulating, um, I'm manipulating what I'm seeing and I'm actually doing it. Um, and then we go down to number two towards the bottom here, um, spongy bone. So here in a second, we flip the page. Now it's going to kind of take these terms. By the time we have done this lab, this will be in the vocabulary, um, something they're becoming more used to. So now we're driving home concepts, scaffolding, uh, things so we can build. Um, so eventually, like with my kiddos now, we're about to move into the muscular system. We're going to move the skeleton that's attached to bones and already things that we've talked about. So now let's go ahead and turn the page to see where the bagel comes into, into play here. So help the students to visualize the structure, cross-section of bone. Uh, it may be helpful to make an analogy of the bone pointing. I'm looking at my phone because I love to talk. So I'm doing okay on time here, sorry. Um, you may want to point out to some of them how spongy bone and compact bone get their blood supply and why that occurs. And this would be a really appropriate time, um, to talk about some bones in our body that only have one blood vessel. So for instance, our scaphoid bone. So let's go ahead and do this. Everybody put their hand like this as well. Okay, this is called an anatomical snuff box right here in between the two tendons. This is back when George Washington was chopping out cherry trees. They put the snuff right here up their nose. I didn't make it up. That's just what it is. Okay? So everybody pull, push, put a little bit of pressure here on the bone. That's your scaphoid bone. If that ever hurts, don't walk, run to your local favorite orthopedic surgeon. That scaphoid bone has one blood vessel. So if I slip and fall on ice, tackle wrong, get hit, car accident, and there's pain here. If I don't get that looked at, there's a really good chance that that bone could be compromised. And that would get a potential bone death and necrosis. So talking about blood vessels and bone structure, I can easily take that into a story where I've had more than a handful, unintended, um, student athletes that have had this injury and have had to have difficult conversations with parents of, this isn't just to get an x-ray, six weeks, it's going to get better. This is managed differently. So blood vessels and bones is very important. So again, use the dental floss and threaders to show how relatively easily the thread, um, which represents the blood vessels, can penetrate through the spongy bone. So if we look at our bagel, right, so and look at the picture on the very, um, crust, right, the hard part of the outside of the bagel, that is the periosteum. So periosteum is another vocab word that we would have identified. And the periosteum is the covering of the bone. So it's hard, very thin though, just like this bagel. So then we look at the bagel and now we see on the outer edges where it's, the bubbles are a little tighter together. Ever made bread? You've probably had bread come out of your bread maker or your oven somewhere constructed, right? So that's dense and chewy. Now we have where the bigger bubbles are, that would represent spongy bone. In our conversations, we would identify different parts of our body or our skeleton that would have compact and spongy bone. Compact bone is in the shaft of your bones where growth is not happening. It's where our stability is, where fractures happen. And we build this lesson on a fracture lesson, talk about the different fractures of the body. Spongy bone is where all my teenagers in here, where your growth is still happening. It's where your growth plates are happening. Again, that takes me down a rabbit hole of growth plate injuries, including my own son at nine years old. Getting a tip of a football on his thumb, stunting, it's called a salter Harris fracture, stunting growth. It wasn't broken, but bruised. I put him in a cast because he was nine. He's not going to wear a splint. Anybody's had kiddos that are not really compliant medically, right? So we put him in a cast for four weeks and it still had a little bit of an issue. His one thumb is a little bit shorter than the other. So again, taking vocabulary, taking something that they can hold, right? This picture kind of sort of, especially if we have red dental floss. And we're moving this through these canals. This picture looks like, this bagel looks like this picture. So just to wrap up, I'm trying to, I've taught anatomy physiology for eight years, um, seven, eight years, uh, prior to coming, uh, to Alma. And I've taught it differently a little bit. Now with master-based learning, I'm really teaching it differently. To where it, we're trying to put more hands on things. We're manipulating things. And that's where, um, where I'm going. So that's basically all I have for today. I want to thank you, Mr. Crumley. Um, this moment I were kind of walking around classrooms and we came in and Matt was on the plan. He's holding his bagels and it's an interesting sight. And Mr. Crumley, why are you holding a bunch of bagels? He goes, well, these are the standards. And I've been trying to do it a bunch of different ways and I just realized our kids need to hold it. Um, and our kids just need to touch it and our kids just need to be there. So, I mean, a lot of times it just goes our kids can't do. So if our kids can't do, let's just lower the standard. And that was not where Mr. Crumley went. He just really embodied the culture that we want in Alma. The culture that we want for our kids where it says, you know what? What can I change to put in a way that makes sense to the students to get them to where I need them to be? And, um, I think it was immediate because I think our partner would walk around and we're looking at classrooms was we need to have, really tell some of the great stories on how our teachers are really just delivering incredible instruction to bring our students up to the expectation that Mr. Crumley just really just embodied that moment. And this interesting walk through of arms full of bagels going, why are you here? Um, it's never a good thing when superintendent and principal in my classroom. Um, but we feel like for on our perspective, it was a great moment. I appreciate that. Thank you. Yep. Uh, never eat it. It's fine.
I mean, everybody, everybody bitched their own bit. Oh, God.
You're only telling your own bit. That was a trick. Another example of just incredible conversations with one of our teachers is Mr. Robinson. Um, I, I got a chance to walk into Tim's class where he mapped out the standards. And he's like, well, we're doing this project, but then I thought, like, I could really support the English department by adding client evidence. Or I thought we could build this fun project to really bring up this kind of historical concept. And, uh, one of our goals is this, once we know the standards, once we know what we want our students to know, um, this profession becomes incredibly fun. And Mr. Livingston, Tim has just done, just taken that ball and run with it. And, uh, Tasha, she had to pick all of her presentations, but I, I think she just hit it, like hit the nail on the head of the teachers she wanted you to see. Because I, I mean, Tim, I, I told you this, that I just can't be more proud of you. But I mean, I think it's great when you have an audience to hear it, like just the work that you, your kids to say, this is where I want you to be and what can I do to have fun for you to hear it? Okay, is that my cue? That's your cue. All right. Come on, guys.
So this is a project and, and you'll notice if you're my class, it's very tough. Yeah, they say talk to you, but okay. But anyways, um, this actually came about walking on Mediterranean in Beirut, Lebanon, where I was a teacher for seven years. And my wife is one of the ones that helped come up with this. We were kind of trying to come up with something to get kids involved. Like what makes something interesting? And we tell them, well, we're going to study about exploration and trade. They're like, great. So I'm a big proponent of column-based lessons where you put a kid into a situation and have them work their way through it. Um, let's, I don't know when you're gonna want to see it. No, thank you for shit that. Um, we came up with Shark Tank. Um, if you've seen the television show, the ultimate project at the end is when these guys present to the sharks. The sharks represent teachers in the building, community members, anybody who might have basically get in there to sit and listen to their presentations. They have to give a three to five minute pitch about Indian Ocean trade. So this is Shark Tank, the Indian Ocean Trade episode presented in tenth grade world history. Guess I'm moving it. So the problem, you are a small trading company that currently has one ship in the Indian Ocean Trade Network during the medieval period. You are trying to grow your company and you need investors to help you get to the next level. You will be creating a three to five minute presentation to lure these investors in a Shark Tank format as many, and to get as many funds as you possibly can for your company. I show them some episodes of Shark Tank and some kids don't know what it is. And then we kind of start on this process. The task looks simple to start with. You're going to create a company logo, a slogan. Um, get them to come up with your name. You're going to create a business plan. Many of them want to work on the name, the slogan, the logo, but now the business plan is the hard part. And then their three to five minute pitch. Again, it gets a little bit more difficult as we go on. Some things you must consider. Where are you going to trade from specifically? What goods are you going to be bringing from your home port? Hmm, that means I have to now research and dig in and figure out where are my, where's my home port? And again, I give them about five different places to trade from and they have to make some decisions. What are we going to give them our foreign ports? Because we can't have empty ships because that doesn't make money. How will we make the most profit? What type of ships were we using? Again, I do a lot of scaffolding. We started one part, we add on, we bring some things in. Let me introduce you to three shifts that you may use of this time period. Here are the characteristics. Does it work for you? And they make the decisions. What technology will you use this time period? Again, more research, more digging in, more delegating. How do they work as a team? Because this is not an individual project. Each team has three to five kids. How many you guys have? Four?
Two.
Two, yeah. One of theirs, their guys left and they had to pick up the slack. Uh, let's hear. How are you going to use the monsoon wind? Well, that is the question. For the monsoon winds, how does that affect us? How are you going to deal with the Pirates of Malacca? Now we're bringing in more geography. Well, why were the pirates here in Malacca? This is straight. Why is this important? Uh, let's see here. How are you actually going to get your products to port? Like they just don't magically get there. Did they come by caravan? Did they have? Like, they just don't magically get there. Did they come by caravan? Did they have orders? Were these products there? So there's a lot of digging in. Ultimately, what is your offer to the sharks? How much are you going to give for your company? The ultimate goal is to get shark bucks. These were actually designed by the students one year. She goes, and I designed shark bucks? I said, absolutely, let's spend it all over. Hundred K each, each shark that comes into my room gets a million shark bucks. They can then decide how they are going to spend that money and how they're going to give it to the kids. Student representatives, I have Hayden Lang, Quentin Perry, and Mason Hughes. They created three projects, and one of the reasons I picked these guys is in the questioning phase, they were students that really handled the questions well from the sharks. They don't know what the sharks are gonna ask. And sometimes it's, they have to think on their feet. And each of these guys kind of came up with some very interesting solutions to problems. Uh, can we, that one's starting. You're number one.
Because I had the best presentation.
This worked so well for my computer. If you wanna share it from yours, we can be joined. What's that? Do you wanna join this?
Exactly.
Okay, technical difficulties. What's that?
One time thing I'm.
Yes, that's good.
Okay, it's good.
Take advantage of that.
My story, I have to. Sure.
Thank you.
Picked the junk ship and it was, basically it was the mid-ergron boat. There was a boat that was fast and carried, there was a boat that was heavy. There was a boat that could carry a lot of things, but it was too slow. So we picked the one in the middle, carried a lot of things, but it was still faster. And we ended up naming it the Fisher Queen. It was Fisher King Company, Fisher Queen. Don't blame me. And this was the other thing too, the challenges with monsoon winds, there's also the sickness, the weather, the storms, and clean water. There were so many different things that really Mr. Livingston had us go deep into this project and learn about. It wasn't trade to trade, it was how are you gonna do it, how are you gonna get there, what are you gonna do if something messes up? And so it took a lot of thinking. And that was the end of the presentation. I just wanted to say one thing, sort of thing. I don't think I've ever had to think so deep into something, into a project, into any assignment, any teachers ever given me. So I'm really thankful that they gave us the opportunity to.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
I'm sorry, I can go stand over there. No, it's just me standing back up.
Mr. Livingston. Right, now Quentin Perry would like to present on what he did.
Hi, I'm Quentin Perry. This is my project that I did with my good friends Andrew and Jackson, Mercantile Ventures Co. Unlike Hayden's, we didn't specialize in just fish, we specialized in a lot of all-round just necessities and especially religious material for the time period.
Yeah.
Our mission statement, we're in business to spread luxuries and commodities to the people of China and Indonesia. During this time, China, China and Indonesia were just starting to set up trade with like just their trade routes and everything that was needed at the time. They just started to design a ship for traveling in those waters, which we'll get into later. But all of that is just on the surface of the research that we had to do for this project was just the baseline of all of these countries that we could do. What do you want to choose that will be able to give you the highest return on what you spend on it? And then you have to show that to the sharks and try and get the biggest profit. Our current company's information, our four purposes, we're trying to spread Chinese culture to more places. We want to obtain more resources that are not native to our homeland. We want to get ideas from other countries that will benefit us. And most importantly, we are bartering with Indonesia and making money. During this time period, this project was set during the Renaissance, which is right where these, not only in like Italy and all those places where the Renaissance is known for, but also all around the world, especially in China, the Renaissance was booming everywhere. And the spread of culture and the resources is the big driving force behind all of these projects on this. Our short-term goal, expand the quantity of our trade with the use of extra ships. This is what we needed to prove, what we were going to end up using our money on, that we are going, asking the sharks for. Because the sharks do not want to end up giving you a ton of money if it's not gonna be something valuable to them. And they know that your business is not gonna flourish afterwards. And our long, our long-term goal is to expand to India and Africa and obtain new luxuries. India, which is now one of the biggest exports of trade in the world, back then wasn't as big, but it was growing. And the Chinese really saw this as a good opportunity to expand there and get those native resources to better themselves. And around this Renaissance time period is the time where they were starting to do that. And that's where a lot of the research for this comes in, is you're having to look into the histories of a lot of different countries during this time period, not just the one location that your port is coming from. And you probably have to spend a good day or so with all of your partners, just having to go in depth on this so you can go in later on. And that's where the whole history and research part comes in, that this project was all about.
So we're gonna kind of just, you guys kind of get the idea, we're gonna kind of skip through. I thought this was kind of a funny thing too. Can you tell them what the Chinese says?
Gung fu jiangmao, which translates to Kung Fu Panda. Yes. The writing is actually says Kung Fu Panda.
I actually checked it with Google Translate, just to make sure. Again, more, more kind of with the monsoon winds discussing this. More of the challenges. Again, why'd you guys pick the junk ship?
We chose the junk ship because it was specially designed for the waters between China and Indonesia. And it was also made in mind with the special bamboo sails that it used to ride off of winds. It was a fairly small ship, but with its multiple layers and every, all the equipment that we're taking, like wood and metal, it gets very, very heavy and we want to be able to utilize its versatility on the open waters and with the winds to be able to get to where we want to be as fast as possible, because that's how we're gonna make the most money.
One of the things I have them do is look at different technologies of how did you navigate, how do you actually do this without GPS today? So you did a lot of research here. There, did you get your, did you get your M O?
We got more, we got six hundred thousand.
Good, good, good. One of the other things that I have them do is do MLA format, and this is the crossover with the English department. So they're, they're getting it in two different places. Okay, that's it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. You know, it's amazing, I figured that out finally, got the technology figured out. Amazing, only two, three times.
Right? All right.
Okay.
All right, um, this is my company, we called it Fairways Voyage. Something that I really liked about this assignment was that I got to use my graphic designing skills in making the logo, which I'm really proud of.
Kind of, we can just kind of, again, kind of some of the same things, some of the exports, the imports.
Yeah.
Um, this, talk about kind of this one thing that doesn't really show here. This is one thing I thought was kind of interesting of a kid. Kind of give him a start. I'm like, okay, let's see what you can do now, let's push you a little bit. And one of the things that he did is, and so I'm gonna show it, darn it.
Yeah.
What did it do?
Uh, it was a kind of analysis on what route the ship was going to take. So specifically, from Egypt, we were going to, which was our home port, uh, into India. We were going to trade our, and it was just, it was a visual, it was moving visual that kind of gave a better representation of how in what amount of time it would take.
That was the key part, is going in and digging into the key part of time and understanding how long this actually took.
Yeah. How long?
Again, more of the long-term goals, more of the monsoon winds. Again, every kid kind of did it a little bit different.
Oh, yeah.
Why'd you pick the doubt?
Um, it fertilized teen cells and its ability to tack into oncoming winds. So not only did it teach us how to kind of strategize our naval operations with our trading company, but it also taught us how they actually did it in history. Like what they had to come up with, the advancements in technology that they made specifically to tackle the monsoon winds. Like that was a problem, and they saw it as an opportunity to make it faster. And yeah.
More ships, more trips?
And more of the, of that.
So it's our Shark Tank. They're also taking investors now and re-bought of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do a good job. Very good job.
Good job, you guys.
Um, the students, you don't need to stay till the end of the board meeting, because we're gonna get into normal accounts and all the things that our models excited. But I just wanna thank our students, the presentations, I think it was incredible. Um, just showing what you're learning, what you're learning and how to make, how to make it meaningful. Um, and just kind of having a way to hear students' voices to the learning and having students really talk about how they need to know this part of history.
I'm just so, I mean, how can you not be moved by that? And it's just so affirming that um, we all made the right choice to be in Alma and our kids are critical thinkers and community builders with teachers leading them to make Alma better, to make the world better. So I'm really proud of all of you guys. So really proud of all of you guys.
Okay, so we will move to discussion item B, fourteen twenty P proposed agenda and it's.
So I gave you all a packet. Uh, the first page is kind of what I've come up with for Pro's agenda. I think it kind of gathered together a lot of what's been asked for. The next two were our current policy and our procedure, then I have lost this script on public comment. And then the last set is, um, what Michael had sent me previously for the changes. I don't know if you want to talk about it all now or just get back to me or how you'd like to do that.
Procedure, so it doesn't take a row, just goes. Uh, like everything's got to go. So everything that's on there has some sort of commentary that will reference that as a comment.
Awesome.
So. So this looks like a yellow everything.
So like the, the, the WADA language of public comment, pieces like that, is that, is that what all would go into our policy procedures? It's not necessarily what people will see on it in a meeting, but it's what would be behind the scenes in our policy and procedures.
Uh, so the, the first page, this would actually be our procedure, whatever you guys come up with would be our procedure. Whatever language you would want under public comment would be on every single agenda.
I think the request was to have that language on the agenda for public comments. So, um, maybe members came to make some public comment, they would see it on. Is that what I understand? A lot of this is added, because obviously this isn't. So public comments got.
Yeah, with the WADA language, I mean, the second paragraph says generally the first item of the business that are meeting, it's not a first item of the business. And I'm not like it.
It's, it's kind of normal that a public comment is the first item.
We're just like, open the meeting, start blasting, like your comments, not like in any way.
We intentionally put it as a district, we intentionally put public comment after the discussion items. So that way if there was a comment that's related to the discussion item.
Then it could be worked in.
Yeah. So I mean, you would, we can still keep it how we have it. Um, I think what Ken brought you was, it is how it was that sets up there, also sets up our examples. But, um, to your point, um, as a district, we were intentional about putting public comment after discussion items. So that, um, if there was a public comment, it's that way.
I just feel like that's much more appropriate. It's pretty, so we're just right, right off the start. Like, so I have something to say and it's just out there. And we could have our discussion items and address a little bit more fully and appropriately, I feel like.
The question I have though is usually, you know, we require people to, if they want to speak in public comment to, um, pre-advance the meeting. And so are we changing that if the, if we're allowing the comment on our discussion items? Like you, where they actually.
Are you referring to the part where it says we have a sign sheet for those who wish to see?
So we're, we're still, um, requiring it, the public, the board agenda goes out, uh, Friday.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's an option.
Because we're, we're making the assumption that, that workers of moms are coming to comment about discussion items, but there doesn't say they could be. Come be any for anything, right? So, um.
And at that point, then they would have a comment, but we obviously.
Right.
We have to stick to. That way, I guess. I think it's important that we have the language on here from Washington, the expectation of what a public comment is and how we go about it.
I, I just wanted to see more so that the public can understand how it relates. Because we get up here and we go through the motions and people are like, I don't even know what you're doing.
And it feels very cut off and, yeah.
Right, because we've got a lot of time to explain each item. So if the agenda actually did the explaining for us, now, I mean, obviously they got to be diligent and read the agenda a little bit. But it gives them an idea of why we're doing what we're doing to some extent, I mean.
I a hundred percent agree with that. And I think that no matter what we do or whatever, uh, layout we choose, I still, I believe that that absolutely has to be in there. Because I, I feel like we don't do a good enough job explaining beforehand what's to be expected or the why, and I feel like we need to. Specific to the public comment.
There's a lot of time that people come here to give public comment expecting that the board can respond.
Right.
But they need to understand that it's not, it's not that we don't want to respond, it's just that we're unable to because it's long.
Right. Okay, so are we okay with the order that, that this front, this front agenda, like how it looks?
You would like public comment after the discussion items?
No.
Yes. Where we currently are. Yeah, we'll retain that, but we'll add the phrase within the language there. And then, uh, would you like to move up the informational items for like the articles?
Yes, because I feel like, I mean, you know, yeah.
Superintendent reports in there twice, so.
I see that.
Maybe move that still more twice.
Do you have that much to say?
I sometimes do. I actually appreciate the extra thought. It's not something that I have that much to say, it's that sometimes I forget like last night, so I like having that extra.
So when I went through this, I actually went through the multiple districts that had their agenda, how they have agenda. I tried to pin it into what I thought our, our system. Yeah, and then I added comments. That's why you can't see the comments here, so it's kind of a little funny.
Might, might, will we see back? And I could live with it. I, I don't like the language of the public comment. It, it doesn't sound like we're speaking to our community. It sounds like, it, it, it doesn't communicate to me that we appreciate that they're here and that they're being, they're willing to take the time to share this. Um, I just feel like it sounds kind of like, uh, here's rules, just make sure you're positive. And I know that's not our, our intent. The reason we want it in there is that we want to actually be able to communicate, we care and we're here, listening, but we're bound under, yeah.
And, and I think that, that, I think is, you know, like you said, you could live with it. I think it's kind of like one of those necessary things. We might not really like how it looks. Um, but I think it's appropriate to lay it out. These, these aren't our words. These are the rules of how they have to be framed. Um, I think it's appropriate that we, that we have people read it how it's written and, and really.
And it looks like it's our words.
Well, all of the things look like they are. You know, policy, procedure, everything. I mean, we have the ability to change some things, but not all. So I think, you know, I don't know that rules always look warm and fuzzy. I agree. It's kind of feels like you're gonna get up and you can do this and this, this.
It feels heavy handed, but sometimes I also wondered if, um, kind of being firm, like really can't reply is still maybe a more kind way to be. It's not, maybe not the nicest way to be, but I, I think it, it is something that I wouldn't leave a lot of gray on. Because if, if, I, I think if there's a way to make it, if, if I, I appreciate the soft, the idea of a soft panel. But I also don't know if, um, if you're looking for a way to communicate with the committee, it's not trying to blow you off, we just literally can't reply. Like, because if we reply, it means whatever you wanted to comment on was supposed to be a discussion item and we haven't advertised it. I mean, that's really kind of like the nicer rationale is, when you say OPMA, it's if you made a comment regarding X and X wasn't on the agenda and if the board engages in a conversation on X, now you violated the law because you're engaged in a board discussion item that wasn't advertised. Somebody wanted to know what was going on, we could be here for it. Um, I think rationally explaining it that way makes sense to somebody, but sometimes I'm like, when you're kind of writing it out, you're trying to let it stay short. It's what I want, I don't know.
Do you reference the regulation? Like, I mean, it's covered by OPMA, right? So, I mean, I know it doesn't exactly say that in there. I was like, no, it doesn't. But I was trying to find it. It's, I know it's on.
It's on, it's on the other one.
It's on.
It's not on.
But it's not on that one. Yeah, because this one's, it says OPMA does not allow the board to discuss a topic that is not on the agenda. As public knows, required before the board, we discuss a topic. So, I mean, it, you know, kind of points them in the direction of where the information comes from and why we're violating that information. If they wanted to do more research, they'd find out that it's a book.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So maybe we need to have it looked in there, kind of a little bit of a mashup to make it not say, not great, but also not, yeah.
I, I'd like, I think maybe bring up the paragraph of that OPMA section.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Because it does kind of get you the rationale. The other, the other thing that I think that's getting us to you is that this is the, the boss size. It just is like over.
It just.
It is overbearing, right?
It, it just, I, I don't know. I think the best way to say it is, we celebrated the bagels and making the learning more meaningful. And I just, like, for the, and I feel like this is the textbook versus the bagel, and I like the bagel for. I don't know. So I would be willing to, since we don't have a decision today, I personally would be willing to, um, work on maybe making this more community, uh, friendly, if that's who we're trying to be. And keep us out from being in trouble by.
Yeah, I, yeah, so.
I think there's a balance.
It is, yes, definitely. It should be a welcome.
Well, and we're like. Almost similar.
Yeah, I have to say, this doesn't, this does not speak our language.
No, so. Okay.
Over.
Thank you.
Because Michael's gonna send you good stuff.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we have a mid-year superintendent evaluation scheduling.
I think it's just a kind of reminder on, um, kind of how to, how to get it on your calendar. With the weighting of our board agendas from the yearly schedule, I do know that we're not hitting the bulk of a lot of the goals. So we just had the, um, financial goal was last year and then the reviewing of the plans was in our November board meeting. And then it's our next meeting, Mr. Kitty will give the board discussion through the mastermind. So I just kind of wanted to put the reminder out with the understanding that we haven't hit the goal at all.
When do you suggest that you would like to have that, um, evaluation?
Your evaluation is?
What are the dates?
Yeah, so I was gonna ask, what's the date saying?
I feel like in our, in our.
And the, the decent contract doesn't really line up with pragmatic on how we schedule our calendar.
Okay.
Because in August, you set your goals or your priorities, look at it. September, we set the goals. I'm hoping we identify or we're gonna come out and then start getting November, so then you get to November, maybe you get to January. So you've gotten a chance to review, set your goals and see progress on your list.
But again, it's, it's not that the goals are being, the goal is met, it's just that.
Yeah.
It feels like we're, we're moving and making adequate progress. Remember, because that's really all that we said that we'd be marked. And it's either making adequate progress or not.
It doesn't fit the school contract, this, this school contract.
Right.
Is any word.
Yeah, that is, that's all that really, that mid-year shows, on our earlier.
Yes.
So I feel like January, we, we know now it will track, or we have like a reader. So I think it just swept our, uh, challenge for January, it comes back.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it's on this agenda. It couldn't have been on the previous. So, um, do we want to set it for, do we have time to do it in between our next board meeting?
Yeah, we, we could do it.
I think we have time.
You'd like to do it after the next board meeting?
Yes. Why not?
Just waiting, right? He's ready. Open the paper.
So that's your plan for more time to go.
Yes.
Without.
Yes. Sam's, Chris.
That's, that's, that was my clarification.
In exact session. In exact session. Yes. Okay, we have a, a registered public comment. Uh, new business, approval of knowledgeable state travel request. Looks like they're going March one second and May third.
Senior group for knowledgeable to attend the, um, state knowledgeable.
The approval of knowledgeable state travel request.
Second motion made in second. Is there any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of fast pitch walla walla, uh, April twelfth through thirteenth.
We are, uh, that's a trip covered by boosters for fast pitch, evening, uh, solid. For the approval of fast pitch travel request.
And a motion means second day, this very discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Looking opposed? Motion carries. Um, approval of the MBL Miniola New York site visit travel request from SCU, March four thirty eight.
Okay.
So you may ask, you may ask, you know, why Miniola, New York? Well, Chris and I were able to give a presentation in Washington DC this year about some of the stuff. We're doing, one of the things I talked, was the badge books. Our badge books had just come out. We got our chest pretty puffed up about what our badge books look like. Everybody got really good feedback on our badge books. Everybody in the audience was really excited. And the next day, there was a presentation of badge books. I'm gonna go see what this other school's doing. It was Miniola. They'd been doing it for six years and it was badge books on steroids. I mean, I like kind of shrunk down in the back. Anyway, I had an opportunity later to visit that school at another conference. And it turns out that there, that's where the, the whole badge book idea came from and went to West Valley, then from West Valley to here. They've been doing it for six years. Their teachers are very versed in how they use it. They are also using the Empower system. They also, um, their social emotional learning, they took the neuroscience avenues, same type of deal what we do. They're literally doing everything that we're doing right now, only they've been doing it for six years. And so.
We were in DC. Wendy, were you in Denver that trip or were you the earlier trip? So we had a team in Denver, well, Mark and I are in DC. And the team in Denver goes, hey, there's a school this year from New York using the exact same, uh, power learning management system. And then we go, which district? And they go, it's Miniola. And we go, well, we just saw them present on badge books. So we do have the S R funding that needs to go away by the end of January.
We're gonna use mastery-based learning funding for it though. I, I put into every building budget, uh, so this is coming from the mastery-based learning grant. It's not any other district money. It was built into that budget, each building has, uh, specifically so for these types of things. Because we can talk about what it looks like, we can get zoom, we can zoom in, but until you get into. Because we can talk about what it looks like. We can get Zoom. We can zoom in, but until you get into a classroom with a teacher that is doing the same thing you're doing, uh only they're an expert at it. That's when we really get our teachers over the hump. So that's what this is designed to do. They'll get uh some knowledge about badge books. They'll get some knowledge about the Empower, how that's being used in combination. And they'll get some information on the social emotional learning. They go right into the. And it's the only school probably in the country that's doing what we're doing. If you had attended, when we attend these uh mastery based learning collaborative meetings, we always walked away as an elementary going, but what about elementary? There's no elementary examples. Nobody's doing what we're doing. So always high schools or alternative schools, maybe middle school thrown in there instead of mastery based learning. So this is a great opportunity for. You'll see that we haven't picked the specific dates. I have a Zoom meeting with two principals of buildings over there so we can coordinate what uh what we need to see and the dates that we fit into their school calendar as well. But I'm thinking it's gonna be the sixth, seventh and eighth, eighth. This looks really good for us cause it's a non-school day. It's a weather day. As long as we don't have any nasty weather between now and then. So we would not have to get subs for Monday out of those three days. So that then, believe me, that helps, right? So you have any questions, specific questions about it?
You know, how many staff you're.
So here's what we want to do. Uh I'll know more tomorrow. There's two different buildings. One of them is a K two building. I've been able to get the go ahead from that principal. I spent more time with her on my visit. The other principal I don't know very well, so I don't think she understands exactly what I want my staff to see. So I'm gonna talk to her tomorrow before she could say, yeah, come on over and visit. I'll get the go ahead, but I'm hoping we'll send one teacher from each grade level, K through five, and maybe K two. Administrator and something. So there could be up to eight of us.
I'll move for the approval of M B L Miniola New York site visit travel request.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made in second minute. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We'll report back.
I can say that.
Sounds exciting.
Okay, approval of redefining ready travel request.
This, this is the I group that we lead uh nationally for all the school districts. I will say positively. The April of two thousand twenty five trip is going to be in Omaha. So there will be note where all of these school superintendents from across the United States will be coming in Omaha. This is gonna be a lot of the year. Oh, like where it'll be um in uh this one is in um Saki, uh New York.
New York.
Cause Saki's actually a smaller than.
Okay.
So I'm gonna be there. The Saki team is very excited to come to Omaha. We're large. We're, we're not talking Long Island. Uh Mark's trip is on Long Island. This trip is in upstate New York.
Where there is an Elma, New York. I don't think it's actually far from Elma, New York, to be honest.
Maybe that's what it is. Did you possibly sound set videos there?
Possibly. It's uh just south of the bond, south of the bond. State capital.
Albany.
Just south. So we do have a plan with the Albany. Um and uh Candace has been looking um. Apparently there's nothing else out of that, not like all of this.
Yeah, it's a long flight.
I'll move. I'll move to approve the redefining ready travel request.
And a motion made in second minute. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um approval of learning twenty twenty five travel request to Pittsburgh.
Full disclosure, I'm not decided if we're actually gonna go, but we were asked to present because of our redefining ready order. Knowing with May coming up pretty quick, I felt that I would need a little more approval before making the final decision. So um guess what I'm seeking is, that's what we discussed. So nothing's been done on this. We're seeking tentative approval to present at the Learning twenty twenty five. We're a member of Learning twenty twenty five. Um you people, other board groups has had the umbrella. That's how Mark got supported through the social emotional learning work. Um and it's a request on presenting our work or for collaborating this work, but I don't know if we'll go. So I'm seeking tentative approval.
Oh, and for the approval of learning twenty twenty five travel request. And a motion made in second minute. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Enrollment.
Um we're actually holding strong from our uh December calendar, come way back out of one off. Uh we were fifteen sixty three in September, uh fifteen eighty one in October, kind of seeing a bit of a bend with our T K coming in. And then uh we are having um um kind of more high school students. Um like less high school students. You can notice like in November, December, we went from five twenty to five oh eight in our basic ed high school. But our, you can notice that our kindergarten has kind of had a small little creep from one oh three to one oh seven. So um I think we're kind of holding really kind of strong in that basic ed fifteen fifty seven. In addition to that, we have our district A O E even average of the past, and by our A O E program has been consistently growing. And those pulls off a bit in January. It goes higher in December. Um and our open doors enrollment. On that's had a, it's been holding pretty consistent. Um you'll see those on the second page. Are there any questions? This trending similar to last year? Yeah, it's not uncommon. School districts just felt high and called all down. I don't know. It takes consistent to last year. We had two, three years of non-traditional enrollment. So I would say this is consistent with a regular school year. We in the last few years have had kind of upward trending throughout the school year. That's not normal. One of our last three, two years, three years, would you say this had been like kind of had this kind of slow, consistent growth throughout the year. Um our enrollment did not look like any other school district in the state of Washington in the last couple of years. This is much more what a school district should expect. You agree with that?
Yeah.
A a month after month increase is not normal.
Who are the January totals for A O E seems? Cause it's, there's sixty four.
Oh yeah, it looks like we're not calculating. Eric might take a double check or not.
Not nine through twelve.
Yeah, cause if we have sixty four, nine through twelve, but a total of twenty five. Exactly, exactly the same as the next column over and yet it's.
Yeah.
So it's just a, it must be the sun box must be off. On the, when is it? Is that just like twenty?
It doesn't on on both the top and the bottom, the whole, the whole pages. I'd say.
That is that one directly. Is that reported?
That's directly out of states what we reported. And so it would be their calculation.
It must be. Yeah, that's really weird because that the above you have one that's twenty already and then you have a total of twenty five. And so we can, yeah, we would look at it.
We can look at it, but it's gotta be something in their program.
On the side, they use averages. This is the bottom line of the.
Because we're paid off our average.
Oh.
So the end is where you want to look. That's what we're being paid for, not the individual.
Yeah. That would affect our average greatly. If that number is us.
Yeah, me and Eric can look into it.
We get to move on to budget?
See, guys have your budget reports in front of you. Right now, we're running with about a three point five million dollar fund balance. We're projected to go up by the end of the year, but no, those levy funds that are not being used are because we've replaced some with S R and other grants we have. Most of our fund balance is levy dollars. Uh um just so you know, and you know, we're gonna drop off in twenty twenty five. So here's your reports. If you've got any questions, let me know. It's gonna show you your trend, expenditures, revenues, our cash flow through the month. And then the very last report is showing you what the prediction was and where we're actually sitting. So you can see right now um the red is salaries and benefits. But we're running really close right now. Next month, you're gonna see a change in reports because January is when they come out with the actuals. So and this is all based off budget. So you're gonna see your change in January from what's being recovered. Um we have some recovery, a little bit. Um I think only about thirty two thousand this year. And that would have been money that we couldn't spend. Um which is it was specialty money, could only be spent on certain things going in summer. Um we had an admin leave who was in charge and they left. And so we had about thirty, I think it's thirty two thousand that was recovered in our lap funds. Any questions?
Not yet. But Friday.
Yeah. I look forward to having you guys doing.
Okay, superintendent reports.
Um we've had a lot of exciting things going on, a lot of community partnerships. I think one of the most exciting ones that we've had the last couple of weeks is we've been charging our F A S A final week. Last year, we sent around thirty percent of our students to the final of F A S A. Um we had twenty two families by six P M, I think, until seven in partnership with Grace Harbor College, having our students support F A S A reports. So um I think in one night, we hit a large portion of our families. We had three unhoused students who are in house through some of F A S A without family documentation or SMIL W A S A, which is Washington State Financial League. We don't have this kind of documentation for that financial league. Or so just having Grace Harbor College come in, support the work, and our students figuring out how they can have um financial, how they can apply for money for post-secondary education. Uh we're like, you know, we're invited to the um the um uh the W A S A dinner last Monday night. And Washington Community Council had their committee meeting last night. So having some influence on a new university admissions requirements. The big conversation is eliminating math as a, the third year math, removing the third year of math, uh the third year math in the senior year of high school as a university, as an admissions requirement if you have earned college level math credit. So adding stipulation is the reason why they want students to take math in their senior year is so you don't have that math wash, right? So you don't know, because technically a Elma graduate could finish math in a sophomore year of high school. And not two years without taking math, then you need to take math as a college student. But um if we could do a math and a sophomore year of high school, college level math, plus a sophomore year of high school, and here is on college level requirement. So really gotta engage, engage in that conversation on how what we're providing our students and what those classes will look like. So we had to have that this conversation. So two impactful conversations that we gotta be at the table for. And then on Sunday, except we didn't invite, we're going to the legislative conference. We had South Beach Sound Community College appearing out with legislative board. So this is one of those um solid like, no, no dates off weeks.
And then don't you, isn't there another F A S A uh night next week?
Or we have another, do we just?
I'm not sure if she's scheduled another one.
I feel like there was another one. There is not.
I think we have more F A S A support, but I don't know if Grace Harbor College are becoming the next one.
Yeah, I think that there is, there's a night where it might not be Grace Harbor College.
Yeah, I think we, we might. I think we have something else coming up, but I don't know if we have Grace Harbor College coming up the next one. So um Mark will make sure that he'll give me the answer on that. Make sure we have those dates advertised. It it, the system's brand new, so we're really happy to have the ability to block through parents. But the system is less complicated. So it's nice that it's no longer as difficult by being able to block parents to the F A S A system. Um and then those are kind of big things that we've been getting in place. Um the only thing I would add is um our next board meeting, Mark will be leading as a board study session. So I think if we're still on Zoom, our sessions are not on Zoom because we're sitting around a table. Um we had a great uh late start on Monday where every teacher in the district was face to face with the new learning management system and see what's working, what's not working. And Mark's gonna take um I think the plan, our plan is to take you board members through the new learning management system and kind of see how it looks, how it works, and how we're handling these standards. I think Candace.
Candace had a call for that worksheet. The both of the students are out, so we do not.
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
Second. Motion made in second minute. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can you ever ask someone for your bar?
I just don't think.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Please, please, please.
Well, I think my is the last.
Would you like a little midnight snack?